Alright folks, we're going live in five, four, three.
Good evening, and welcome to the study session at the City Council of Moreno Valley. Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call the study session meeting to order on June 11th, 2019, at 6:02 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Protembaka.
Please join me in saluting the strongest flag in the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Protembaka.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here.
Staff introductions, please.
Pat Jacquez Nares, City Clerk.
Renee Bryant, Management Aid.
Paul Early, Assistant City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Rick Sandsamire, Community Development Director.
Eric Lewis, City Traffic Engineer.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Alright, well, thank you to the staff, and just to let everybody know in the public, there are three items of business that we have. One is A1, which is notifications for proposed land use changes. The other one is A2, which is review of current commercial vehicle parking areas. And then A3, which is the proposal to create a mobile workforce program. So, from now, I'm gonna go ahead and open it to public comments on matters on the agenda. There is a three limit, time limit per person. Please complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the City Clerk. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to myself, or to the City Council as a whole. And I ask that everyone just keep their comments to be respectful towards each other. Madam Clerk? Go ahead and call the first three.
Camila D. Williams, Bill Perez, and Jonathan Caballero.
Okay.
Ms. Williams asks that we go out of order, if that's okay?
Yes.
I'm Bill Perez.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, thank you tonight for being here. As you can see, we have a number of friends from the trades. My name is Bill Perez. I'm the Executive Secretary and Business Manager for the Building and Construction Trades Council covering San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. We proudly represent in excess of 16,000 trades workers within the two county area, many of which live here in Moreno Valley. So, I'm a lifetime resident of Riverside, Riverside County. Grew up running around here on Old Riverside Raceway when Edgemont and Sunnymead were names out here, so remember. So, it's really nice to be here now because we have an opportunity before us on a community workforce agreement, where we can literally tie those working opportunities that are brought with public projects and public dollars, tie those to the local community, put hard numbers into a negotiated agreement, that every contractor of all tiers then would have to utilize regardless of where the contractors come from. Public contract code will hold you to the lowest responsible responsible bidder. This will hold the contractors to making sure that wherever they come from, they will do a benefit by the local residents here that are in the crafts and put them on the jobs. That keeps some money in the community. It's the best way to go here. So, I'm really proud and pleased to be here. I'm not gonna spend all night defending community workforce agreements, project labor agreements. I've done it for many years. I've done them on $3 billion jobs, and I've done them on $1 million jobs. So, it's nothing new. It's done the private sector successfully, and it's done in the public sector even more successfully at times. So, I'll be the one that'll be working with staff, should we move forward today, to pound out a nice agreement that we can all agree to, and hope to be back here in August with something that we can mutually agree on, and help everybody out out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Next speaker, Camila.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to come out and speak with you guys. My name is Camila D. Williams, and I'm the Executive Assistant for the Building Trades Council. I've been with the Council for 12 years, and I'm also a resident and a homeowner here in a Moreno Valley District Four. So, I am in great support, of course, of the community workforce agreement. Because of being a resident here in Moreno Valley, you know, it brings a lot of the local hires and things like that to Moreno Valley, you know, something that, you know, that could benefit Moreno Valley as a taxpayer, you know, that's recycling our dollars, bringing, you know, good, hardworking men and women from the trades to our area, which is a good thing. And also, working with the trades, I will work closely, of course, picking back off what Bill said, with you all, and with the local hires and your community, we're bringing a lot of the job fairs and things like that to the community. So, I just wanted to come out and introduce myself to you, and just to let you know what our benefits are with also having the workforce agreement here in the City of Moreno Valley. So, I'm looking forward to working with all of you and your staff, and of course, my community that I live in, very closely with the agreement. So, like I said, I don't wanna take a lot of bit of your time, because I know we have a lot of speakers, so I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Camila. Thank you for coming.
Miguel Soto Major, Omar Cobian, Carolina Michelle.
And what about Jonathan?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jonathan Caballero.
My name is Jonathan Caballero. I just wanna say thank you for letting me come out here and speak. And, you know, I'm a first year apprentice, and I just graduated, and I just wanna say that Moreno Valley workforce would be very beneficial for especially the first year apprentices, you know, who would like to work locally, and there's a lot of job sites really far, and I'm just really excited to put my skills that I learned in high school to, you know, to good use here in my own community of Moreno Valley. And that'll be it today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Caballero, for coming.
Miguel Soto Major, Omar Cobian, Carolina Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just wanted to give you guys a great thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak to you guys. I, as well as you're hearing, as everyone else came before me, and all my awesome brothers and sisters that are standing behind me, are in very much agreement for this proposal. I myself am a resident of Moreno Valley. Love this place. I love the direction that we're going. And as a proud union carpenter, and as a proud resident, I wanna say that I stand behind this proposal 100%, and ask for you guys' approval on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Omar Cobian.
Good evening. My name is Omar Cobian. Moreno Valley has been my home for most of my life. I support the Moreno Valley workforce program because it's the future of the city. I remember last week, Councilmember Thornton mentioned that we gotta stop thinking like a little city. We're not a little city no more. Over 200,000 people, we gotta think like big cities, and big cities do have these types of programs, these type of agreements. Definitely put money back into the city. I encourage the Council to move forward and think to the future, and vote yes on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar.
Carolina Michelle, Louis Lopez, George Esqueda.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez. My name is again Carolina Michelle, and I am a 29-year resident of Moreno Valley. In the many years I have lived in our city, I have enjoyed seeing the economic growth we've had, thanks to the hard work that many of you have put forward. However, there's always room for improvement and greater growth. And the proposed Moreno Valley Workforce Program is that opportunity for our community. Such a program will hopefully bring quality jobs, but also quality wages, which we need in our community. The investment you put forth today is the investment for our city of Moreno Valley, but also for our children, who of course are our future voting citizens of our community. They will benefit from these quality employment opportunities. As an educator for the past 23 years, I have made it my mission and dedication to prepare all students for that college and career path. And because that child is prepared at the end of high school, then it is her opportunity, her decision to choose the path she chooses, be it college path, be it a trades path, be it a technical path. And with a strong workforce program here in Moreno Valley, we then will benefit from her choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Louis Lopez, Jose Esqueda, Eduardo Cervantes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Louis Lopez. I'm a business agent for the ironworkers. I chose to stand up here tonight to share with you my perspective of a community benefit agreement. A community benefit agreement is exactly what it is. It benefits the community. I like to put it in the perspective as far as if a household obtains a good paying job, typically maybe you might go buy a new car. Maybe you get the backyard done, nice patio, maybe a pool for the family. Maybe you'll get the kitchen done, some new cabinets, some new appliances. Basically, what you're gonna do, you're gonna be spending money. And in any, any good neighborhood, you could typically drive by and see, 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 see the benefits of good paying jobs. You know when you're in a good neighborhood. Likewise, in a good community, you're gonna see the benefits. That's exactly what it is, a benefit agreement. You're gonna provide local jobs, local hire skilled and trained workforce, which all benefits everything, because if we want our children, which most of us want our children, to have a good paying job, then work with us, work with the trades. We'll get them trained, get some, get some programs in school, welding programs, blueprint programs, basic construction or trades, you know, things to move forward. But the thing is, you gotta provide them with those jobs, because we could train them. The trades, we provide four or five-year programs that we, we fund. Not everybody's gonna go to college. Not everybody can afford to go to college. But when they come out of the trades, the apprenticeship program, zero debt. We fund our own schooling. We fund our own college. And then, but if there's no jobs for them, good paying jobs, because of course, when we put money into them, they expect a good, a good wage, like anybody. If you go to college, you expect to make a good wage, just like in the community. So, if there's no jobs for them, then where are they gonna go? After they've been trained? After we put our resources and our funding into these children? Where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to the bigger cities. So, also, what does that do? It affects the family, a healthy community. Because when your children have to get up and move with your grandchildren, how you gonna feel about that? Not only that, what it does, community. When you start, when you got good, strong communities where these residents are neighbors, grown up with each other for 20, 40 years, that's security. You feel safe, your children going out there and playing. You know your neighbor. You could leave on vacation, you know your neighbor's got your back. They're watching out for you. That's a healthy community right there. And if we provide the jobs here, the high paying, or good paying, I should say, wages, it's gonna go right back into the community, right back into the small businesses, right back into, you know, the restaurants, the movie theaters, the malls, you know what I mean? It's gonna go right back into it. I thank you for allowing me to share my aspect on a community benefit agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Next three speakers.
Jorge Esqueda, Eduardo Cervantes, Juan Barreras.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. My name is Jorge Esqueda, and I just wanna say that I'm for the community workforce. I have called Moreno Valley my home since 2008. I just recently bought a home here in Moreno Valley, because I do feel like there's a big growth coming, and also because I believe in Moreno Valley. This goes to show that I plan to stay in Moreno Valley. I wish I could just work in Moreno Valley. I'm excited at the opportunity to help build the community that I live in. Oops, sorry. And in the city that I pay taxes. By approving this community workforce agreement, you are directly showing taxpayers that their hard-earned dollars are going back to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, George. Eduardo Cervantes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. My name's Eduardo Cervantes. Me and my family been here for about 28 years. Most of the time that I grew up here, my father always worked in Los Angeles. There was a lot of times I got myself in trouble, you know? And I think if he would've been around for me to not get in trouble, I probably would've had a better direction, but he still taught me to be a good person and make good choices. So, by you guys making this, I'm also a construction worker, and I work in the area. And I love being home on time to hang out with my kids, and take them to do their sports, and help them out with their homework, and just try to do as much as I can for them, because our time is real limited, within a day's 24-hour scope. And I feel like having more time with them helps them be better community leaders also, and help benefit this city by helping it grow better and making it stronger. And just wanna know, I just wanna say that we need to put our community first, and pretty much our kids are our future, and we need to support them, and give them whatever we need to provide for them to make them successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo.
Juan Barreras, Russell Tyson, Julio Flores.
Hello. My name is Juan Barreras. I was asked to come here and speak.
Just speak a little closer.
Oh, sorry. Juan Barreras. I've been here since 84, since it was Sunnymead. So, I've seen it go through its ups and downs. Have been to all the schools, Honey Hollow, Vista Heights, Canyon Springs. I've lived here quite some time. So, to work nearby or work close to home, it's awesome. I've done the four-hour drives. I've done working, you know, in far locations. I support this, in essence, because we're all here just to make money, make a living, be happy. I spend my money where I live. It's nice to work where I live or close to it, and just the quality of life. A good city. So, I've been here a long time. I see a lot of potential. There is a lot that can still be done. There's a lot that will be done. And I think that keeping everything in-house or close to it only benefits everybody as a whole. Your money is spent here, it's made here, everybody's happy. What more do you want? What more are we looking for? I'm still trying to figure that out. So far, happiness works, and this makes me happy. And I strongly support this. Put my best foot forward in everything that I do, and I really feel if this was to come into fruition, and everybody is to bind together to make this happen, then we will only improve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Juan. And if we could just have it just a little cleared out that way, so that way the folks can, can make their way through. Alright, next three speakers.
Russell Tyson, Julio Flores, Ricardo Cisneros.
If those three can maybe line up right over here, so... It was Russell, Julio, and Ricardo. No Russell? Okay.
Julio Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Julio Flores, and I'm a resident of Moreno Valley, and a carpenter by profession. I for one would love to see this agreement be passed, because not only would it give us the opportunity to work closer to home, but also to spend more time with our families as opposed to commuting for long hours from the job sites, which are usually located at least two hours away from home. We live here, and it would most definitely be nice to be able to work here, and continue to be part of Moreno's Valley's growth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julio.
Ricardo Cisneros.
Good evening. My name's Ricardo Cisneros. I'm a resident of Moreno Valley. One thing I'm gonna say is that this, making the choice today is the right choice to move forward and building good jobs here in Moreno Valley. Throughout the years, living here in Moreno Valley, like the brother said earlier, I've seen its ups and downs, you know? And especially, making this move now is the right step. I didn't introduce myself, but, you know, again, as Ricardo Cisneros, I'm actually the head of the Labor Council. So, we're a coalition of 89 locals, over 200,000 members here in the island empire, and I'm proud that you guys are making this move today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cisneros. Roy Blackard, followed by Chad Fiskus and Yakuba Brown. Is Roy Blackard here? Oh. Okay. Alright, we'll move forward with Chad. Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name's Chad Fiskus. I'm a resident here. I've been a resident of Riverside, i.e. my whole life. I always wasn't the best resident. I was a delinquent, but as of now, I'm a 416 union ironworker. And what that stands for is I have a whole family that backs me, and since I've been an ironworker, I've been able to buy a house in the City of Moreno Valley. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm able to support three kids with one baby on the way. And I work in LA, I work in Long Beach, I've worked at the Air Force Base. And you're not just buying a contract, you're buying a family, you're buying, you're doing business with people that support one another, and I think that's what stands most in God we trust, and that's what I believe in. And I just got back, I got a migraine, I worked in Long Beach, but I came here today last minute just to speak what I believe in, and I believe in that hiring people like us, we're a drug-free labor community, we are family-based, and having people like us, we're able to provide for families and provide for our communities, and be more than what other contracts have to offer. So, I'd just like to speak up for all of us in saying we appreciate your time, and we give it all we got in every step that we do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Next speaker is Yakuba Brown.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I am from the Viadham Group, as you guys know. We are a youth organization here in the City of Moreno Valley, that represents a little over 600 kids here in the City of Moreno Valley, and approximately about 700 to 800 in Riverside County. I had a brief moment to kind of learn about what this workforce initiative was for the labor union, and the young men that got up to speak about the apprenticeship program, that's pretty much why I wanted to come tonight and show the support. I hadn't planned on it. But I support the mobile workforce program and the apprenticeship. I have two kids that are in our program, we're going through graduations and all of that stuff now, that are not gonna be going to college and wanna get to work. And by having that apprenticeship program, where these kids can still get the knowledge and the training that they need with regards to employment, but we can also funnel them to our Moreno Valley College while they're in the apprenticeship program, and also keeping dollars here in the City of Moreno Valley. With the higher mobile and the momentum mobile movements, I believe that this will be a great, a great step forward for the City of Moreno Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Yakuba.
No more speakers.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments, and we'll start. I'm gonna go ahead and, you know, given the amount of folks that we have here tonight, we'll go ahead and hear this item first, and, which is the proposal to create a mobile workforce program, and we'll start with a report from our City Manager that'll give a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the Council. This evening, I'm here to outline the Mayor's proposal to create the mobile workforce program. The, the goal overall is to enhance local hiring by contractors on city public works projects valued at $1 million or more. By public works, I don't mean only projects done by the Public Works Department. I'm using the broader definition of public construction projects that are funded and managed by the city. This, this proposed program would forge a partnership between the city and the San Bernardino Riverside Building and Construction Trades Council to create construction jobs for local residents on these projects. This is also consistent with the Council's Momentum Mobile Strategic Plan, which Initiative 1.3 focuses on promoting local hiring, as well as workforce development efforts. This is fully consistent with that. The way the program would work would be to create a standard community workforce agreement that could be applied to all of the eligible public works projects, again, valued at $1 million or more. The mayor is also focused on training opportunities for local residents that they could access through the apprenticeships that are provided by the Construction's Trade Council. And in addition to requiring that construction workers have completed approved apprenticeships, the agreement would target, have a couple other additional targets. 30% of the labor and craft positions would be filled by workers residing here in Moreno Valley, and another 10% would be disadvantaged workers and/or veterans who reside either in Moreno Valley or elsewhere in Riverside County. If the concept is endorsed by the Council this evening, staff and I would work with the Trades Council to craft a, an umbrella program agreement to implement the program, and then we would return to the Council with a proposed agreement for your review and consideration. As with other higher mobile programs, this would be another avenue through which the Council could invest local resources to enhance hiring for local residents. Costs would vary depending on the, each individual project. So, that completes my brief staff report for this evening. We look forward to the Council's discussion and direction.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you for that comprehensive report. And I'll just go ahead and begin a little bit by just saying that, you know, I'm all about hiring locally, you know, and making sure that we give those opportunities to the residents that live in our city. And so, about a couple years ago, actually, maybe it was maybe three years ago, I proposed a program called Hire Mobile. And so, this is a program where we actually incentivize the businesses to hire Moreno Valley residents. And so, this proposal that we have here actually tonight goes a step farther. So, we're actually going to put some teeth into that plan, and hopefully, you know, make, ensure that at least, you know, 30%, you know, local hire in Moreno Valley are from Moreno Valley. And then the, the 10%, that was just, you know, a number I came, kinda, just kinda came up with, you know? But I'm not married, you know, I mean, it could be to any percentage or anything like that, but I feel that, you know, our community is doing so well. We have actually ranked, and I don't know if a lot of folks know this, we've actually ranked the top three for being the most fiscally sound city in the nation. So, not in the county, in the state, in the nation. And so... So, when I see that folks are having to drive, you know, one hour to LA, one hour to Long Beach, and then here we have public works projects and all types of projects, because we're growing. This city is growing. We're only at 50% build-out. You know, that's when I said, you know, we, we have to do something about this. And so, I think with this community workforce agreement, or mobile workforce agreement, it's the solution, you know, in making sure that we're helping our residents first. Like somebody said, we're putting our community first, and I think that's very, very important. So, again, there's other details to it as well. I'm available for questions as well, if the Council has any questions about it. But in essence, if there are no, if there are not enough trained workers within that Moreno Valley area, it would expand to, you know, another five miles, you know, and then another five miles, and the contractors, you know, would have that opportunity, you know, to hire, you know, any of the folks that don't have the training, or, you know, if it got to a certain distance. And so, what I have here before us tonight is a mobile workforce program and agreement, not so much to actually, you know, implement it immediately, but to actually direct staff to work with our trade partners and, and folks to come up with a plan that's for Moreno Valley, and to return, you know, the first meeting of August when we come back from recess for the actual, you know, official vote, so that way we can get it going. But I think it's long overdue. You know, originally, I wanted to do something like this, but I started off with the Hire Mobile program where we were incentivizing businesses, but I think we have to put the teeth there. We have to really make sure that, that we're hiring Moreno Valley residents first, and I think that's very important. And I think that's very important. Also, I've done some research, and I've also learned that with community workforce agreements, there's a lot of social and financial benefits to it as well for the city. There's, UC Berkeley did a study, and they found that there were a lot of savings in costs, you know, less change orders, you know, with community workforce agreements. It also helped with training and advancement opportunities. Like one gentleman said, you know, he wasn't able to go to college, but then through the trades, he was able to get that training. And then again, it just supports the whole idea of inclusion, you know, and supporting, you know, the folks that matter the most in our community. And so it does have a lot of benefits. Another benefit that I also found was it helps with resolving union conflict resolutions, you know, between the contractors, because there's already an agreement in place. So it helps resolve some of those problems through mediation, arbitration, and those kinds of things, too. Those are some of the things that I found. But at this time, I'm going to open it up to deliberation to see, you know, if my colleagues have any comments on it or questions. Okay? We have, we'll start with Mayor Protem Baca.
Okay. For the city manager, my question was the thirty percent of Moreno Valley residents. How did you, or how did that number come up?
Well, Paris has thirty percent, so I kind of figured thirty percent. You know, that's kind of, but it can go higher.
Right. I would like to see fifty percent, be it that the majority of the speakers here today were Moreno Valley residents.
And that's part of, you know, bringing it to you all, you know, I could have brought it in the August meeting, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, we get your input before we bring the, you know, the final, the final plan. So...
That was the only question or concern I had.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Just one quick question. We're specifically talking about public works projects, but you, city manager, kind of alluded to this, it's on a broader scale. So this would include things like roads, the channel improvements, sidewalks, streetlights, even parks. Are we talking about everything, everything over a million dollars?
The only, there may be some projects where application could be complicated if funding streams, for example, if state or federal funds are used in the project and the funding source precludes this type of an agreement, that is not the majority by any means. But yeah, basically, any of the big projects that we do would be, would be part of this program.
Okay. And are we only on questions right now, or is this also deliberation?
Yeah. You could be both.
Yeah. So my comments as well on this, I've mentioned before in meetings several months ago that I'm also in the construction industry on the private side. My father is actually here in the back. He's a general contractor, carpenter by nature. Dad, can you raise your hand, please? That's, that's what he does. He's, he's been doing all kinds of different trades since he first came over from Mexico. And, you know, I'm able to learn that now from him, and I'm helping him with the company now. So, you know, I get cut, I bleed and all of that. And so I know what it's like. You have to go where the work is, and we've lived the experience of, for sometimes months at a time, you have to drive out to Los Angeles one way, sometimes two hours, sometimes three hours one way. You have to leave early in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, driving in traffic, trying not to fall asleep, and then trying to drive all the way back every single day after an entire day of hard work, of backbreaking work. And that's tough. It is not easy. But it's what we have to do, because we all have to put food on the table, we have to, we have to support our families. One of the speakers, actually multiple speakers, talked about children and our youth and the effect that all of this has, right? Working far away means less time enjoying the fruits of our labor, enjoying our house, protecting our property, taking care of our kids. You said spending time, you know, doing simple things like taking them to their sports or doing homework with them, and then that stems into things like crime, too. So if we can keep the family together, and this is part of that, staying here where we live, working where we live, and that's what this is all about. So I'm fully in support of it. I'm really glad that this was brought up. And, you know, to see everyone here, that makes me extremely happy, very, very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera, for your support. Councilmember Dr. Carla Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I know you've worked hard, so it's really great to see you participating in this process. So thank you. I had two questions and a comment for you, city manager. So hypothetical, let's say that we want to build a canal and, and the labor, the labor agreement, the contractors go on strike. Would we still have to pay them even though they're on strike? And then would we be able to then, you know, still move forward building this canal? Or what would happen?
Councilmember Thornton, our contracts are structured so that we make payments generally, it's based on progress milestones. And so we would be paying the contractor based on deliverables rather than if work on a project stops, the city does not pay for the, pay additional funds toward the project.
Okay. So with this partnership, since we're saying, okay, so just to clarify, so we only pay for the work that's done, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if the labor union then went on strike, though, would we then be, possibly open ourselves up to liability because they're not able to seek workers from other, other environments? And they have to deal with only labor workers?
Well, let me answer, even under the current situation, if a contractor has problems, sometimes contractors don't pay their subs. And that's another huge problem. And in those cases, you wind up in a stop-work kind of a situation. And if the contractor doesn't do what he or she is supposed to do, then we would generally call, make a call on the surety bond for the contract, for the project, and bring someone else in to complete the project. So the protections are there for the taxpayer to make sure that projects progress and that funding is spent when items are delivered.
Okay. All right. That totally, so I, I'm supportive of, you know, I believe our residents should be able to live and work in their own community. And just from, you know, if this initiative actually passes, imagine the traffic that would decrease on the ninety-one, the two-fifteen. So that alone makes me want to vote for it. But I'm really big about evaluation. And so for a program like this that, you know, would have such a significant, we think, impact on our residents, now it looks like we might go fifty percent, you know, I would want to make sure that there is some type of mechanism in place to ensure that we're able to see if this is actually successful, evaluate where there might be some gaps in some of the trades, right? And where we might need to invest more in the CTEs and encouraging our residents to enter some of these fields. But I think that some type of evaluation would be important in this process. But thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Thornton. All right. So at this time, I'm not seeing any other council members with comments. So I will, I mean, it's basically what I'm seeing here is that there is consensus. And so I will entertain a motion that we direct staff to work with the trades in a comprehensive, and, you know, to develop a comprehensive community workforce agreement and to return by the first council meeting in August.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, in a second, Pat. Okay. City Clerk, go ahead and just do a voice vote.
Councilmember Thornton? Councilmember Marquez? Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Your pro tembaca?
Yes.
Ben Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes, four ayes.
Motion passes, four ayes and one abstention. And I want to say thank you to all of the folks that came out here tonight. We're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a few on the bottom, so I'll talk to you.[1182.51]
Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to begin again. I ask again that you silence your cell phones or put them on vibration during the meeting.
I guess not, huh?
Alright, we're going back live in five, four, three.
Thank you and welcome back to our study session on June 11, 2019. We do have two other items, however, there was one speaker that stepped out when we called and he did ask if he could speak and I did say yes on item A2, which is the review current commercial vehicle parking area, so Roy?
Thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, it's something that comes up especially to me all the time because I have three acres and people drive. I mean, I had a guy come up last week and say, hey, could I park my truck in here? And I said, well, I would be more than willing to do that, but I said, you need to address three member, at least get support of three members on the council to approve more parking area in the city. Trucks gotta park somewhere. There, you know, you can't hide them. And, you know, same thing as we talked about in the earlier agenda item about keeping money in the Moreno Valley. They don't park them in our area with the businesses, they're gonna park them somewhere else. And that city or entity is gonna get the advantage of the revenue and stuff like that, the opportunities that brings. So, I would encourage the council to look at that. We need to have, I think we have, we need to open up more space for truck parking in our city. So, again, so somebody who is a truck driver in Moreno Valley doesn't have to drive to Riverside or Paris or somewhere else, you know, making his commute much longer. So, it dovetails into the same thing, so I hope you will look at that and encourage and put it on the fast track so we can increase the areas that our truckers can have to park their rigs and equipment and things in our city and make their lives easier for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started with notifications for proposed land use changes. A1, Report from Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor Dr. Gutierrez and members of the City Council. This evening, our planning commissioner, I'm sorry, planning official Patty Evans will be running through a prepared PowerPoint covering and opening up discussion on the public hearing noticing procedures we follow when processing development applications. This has been of interest to the City Council a few times, and so we're happy to be here tonight. Before we get into the PowerPoint, we just wanted to take a moment and clarify a couple of terms that are found in our municipal code or state law and other guidelines. And we want to make sure that the public and anybody that's watching understands what we're talking about and what we're not talking about. So, a public hearing is an official meeting where members of the public hear the facts about a planned development, a change to an ordinance or a law, a subdivision of land or something of that nature. And they're invited, they're specifically invited to give their opinions about that prior to the action being taken. That's the notification we're talking about tonight, the notification that gets those people to participate. Usually those decisions are gonna be made by our planning commission or our city council. But there are other bodies like the Environmental Historic Preservation Board that does also require public hearings. And so, these would apply to those sorts of actions. In our municipal code, the word "hearing" does show up in a lot of the different titles. Sometimes that "hearing" is referring to sections in our code that talk about administrative hearings. Maybe there's a contract dispute, maybe there's a dispute over our towing practices or a dispute over a citation that was issued. Those are hearings that are held by the city manager or delegate of the staff, and that's not the type of hearing we're talking about. Also in our code, we talk about public review. A lot of times, the public, when they come, they believe that they've had an opportunity to review a project, particularly the environmental document. The public review period for an environmental document is dictated by other regulations. And it is not necessarily a public hearing, it's a public review period, so there's a distinction there. We'll happen to answer any questions that might come up on that or any nuances you might need on that. In addition to the municipal code, other examples of documents that our staff rely on are the state planning laws and regulations and the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. So, what we're talking about this evening is codified in our municipal code, but it also is based on state laws. In the state of California, the laws are set up to foster full and open public awareness, discussion and debate regarding proposed actions before they take place. The laws are created with consideration to be reasonable, but also do take into consideration the financial burden that can place on an applicant or a developer. So, the laws do take into consideration the reasonableness. The state law is considered a reasonable and a fair standard, that's what our codes are based on. It does not preclude a local jurisdiction from requiring additional notification to go above and beyond state law. But again, the state law already is considered to be a fair and reasonable standard. To provide some flexibility in the notification requirements, our municipal code, similar to other jurisdictions' municipal code, does give the community development director the authority to require additional notice of public hearings to give it in a different manner as deemed necessary for a specific project. There is that flexibility already in the code. With that said, as the community development director for the city, and I've had over thirty years of experience dealing with this sort of stuff, it often doesn't matter how much public noticing you put out for a project, how aware the community is of a public project. Almost always, when there's a project of some sort of interest or some sort of concern, you'll find a public speaker or two that will get up and say they never heard anything about the project. So, we want to make sure that that's understood, that no matter what we do, that is probably a reality. With that said, I do want to turn over the presentation to Patty Evans, and we will be happy to answer any questions the council may have tonight on this topic.
Thank you, and I just wanted to clarify that I believe the item was more of the land use, you know, and so the notifications of that. And I think that one council member in particular, you know, wants to look at, you know, a certain number, you know, of, you know, that's the main topic here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and you're absolutely correct. We're talking about the land use noticing as we use under Title IX, Planning and Zoning. And we'll talk about the noticing requirements, how we meet those requirements, answer any questions, and talk about possible options and recommendations.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at, you know, what are some of the options out there, recommendations and options?
Mayor, I think what you'll find, and that's what I had previewed, is the PowerPoint will get right to the heart of that.
Yeah, because we know it's three hundred feet.
Yep.
You know, that we have.
Yep, we'll just breeze right through it.
Great.
So, we do publish in a newspaper, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. We mail to property owners within three hundred feet. And we mail to the property owner of the subject property along with the applicant. These are consistent with state law. We are actually, our code and also state law allow you to publish a notice in the paper. If you're reaching more than a thousand people with your mailing notice, we don't do that in an effort to be kind of as widespread and unnoticed as possible. Similarly, the notices are mailed ten days in advance, same with the newspaper. We post the site, and that happens ten days in advance, and agendas serve as additional notice. Beyond state law requirements and beyond the code requirements, we do post a sign in front of the business or the property that's as subject. The sign's not a requirement, it's additional noticing that we do provide, it's four by four, it's pretty visible. And we have a company that does that, we send them a copy of the notice, they print it in a nice large format, and they actually put a sign into the ground out in front of the property so that not only property owners, but people who maybe are outside of the radius will be aware of the project. Here's an example, and so we showed you some additional options that might go along with noticing. The blue square in the middle is a project site. The first radius around that, the smaller kind of circle around it, would be a three hundred foot radius. In this case, these are, I used an actual tentative tract map that we did not too long ago. Eighty-four property owners were within a three hundred foot radius. If we expanded that radius to six hundred feet, we would receive, we would reach two hundred and thirty-two people. If we expanded to twelve hundred feet, we would reach five hundred and fifty-nine. And you'll notice, because I've got an industrial or a commercial example next, the smaller, the more residential properties around it will reach more people just by virtue of the smaller lot size and the smaller dimensions. So, looking at an industrial development, you can see the properties are generally larger. Where it reaches into residential area, maybe across a major street, it will pick up more notices. But in general, the larger properties in a commercial or an industrial area will reach fewer people. So, in this case, although, as I mentioned, the site posting with the kind of big square sign is not a requirement, it helps you reach additional people where you might not reach quite as many on a, in a large lot area. Some other options that we thought we'd put up for your review are social media oriented. Notices can be posted on the city website for land use, they are not right now. We do have agendas posted, but another thing that we could do to increase the reach and the visibility would be posting things on the website. There are also social media outlets that the city uses, City Calendar and a city app. We can look into those, we haven't looked into every single one of them specifically. The website seemed the easiest to kind of reach people readily. And the social media is something that we're looking at with another effort, so we'll explore that further if you're interested. We do right now send notices in a white business envelope with the city logo on the outside. Mailing label is affixed to it, those are provided by the applicant. One other way of doing it would be a postcard, so it's visible. People don't tend to throw it in the trash as easily, they can see what it is before they, you know, make a decision to toss it. A lot of people perceive kind of the bland white envelope as junk mail and might not be inclined to open it. A postcard would kind of alleviate that issue. So, one thing, the things that we thought of that you might be interested in entertaining as far as expanding our noticing would be to change the postcard format, it's more likely to be read and it's easier to understand what it is. Another would be to expand the noticing radius one step up, say to six hundred feet. It will reach additional property owners. It would require a code amendment, our code right now speaks to a three hundred foot radius, but it's a fairly simple thing to do. We can post notices on the city website, that would be an easy enough recommendation to implement quickly. Additionally, one thing I didn't mention is that anyone who wants to receive future notices on a particular project is available. They can ask for that, they simply send us a note, a request for that along with a self-addressed stamped envelope, and we can accommodate those. But we can make sure that social media sites out there are aware that they can request that. And we'll simply continue mailing notices rather than utilizing the newspaper option when it's larger than a thousand foot mailing list. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. So, what I'm looking for in this item is if there's any suggestions. Right now, we do the three hundred feet, are there any suggestions to moving it up? And any other suggestions as well? Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
I like the six hundred feet radius.
Okay. Councilmember Cabrera?
Yeah, I agree with that as well, definitely needs to be at least double, so the six hundred feet requirement would be good. And I also like that idea of using social media of the three options, I think next door would probably be the best. I can see how you can use Facebook, but you'd probably have to boost or promote, and that costs additional money. With next door, you can just pick out what neighborhood you want to post it in, and you don't have to pay anything extra. It's just the manpower behind the keyboard. So, I really like that idea, and I didn't see anything on there, but maybe increasing the size of the sign itself. If we can, if we can do that as well, at least by a foot or two, I think that would be helpful as well.
Mayor, if I might, on the social media, what we had in mind was having people who run social media sites get on our mailing list for news releases, so that then the onus is on them as to whether or not to publish. We wouldn't recommend a city process that requires things to be issued on social media because we can't control the placement, we can't really control the content or what's done with it. We don't want to set up rules that, or set up rules that we might not be able to uphold. But we would like, for example, if someone has a website that's focused on Moreno Valley, we would like that person to get on our e-blast list, and we'll get them the news releases. And so that way, I'm sorry?
With the link?
Absolutely. We think that that would accomplish the objective without creating complications for the city.
Alright. Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think that's a good idea, Tom, to do it that way. Secondly, the six hundred feet, I think that's, that's pretty, pretty reasonable. Councilmember Cabrera brought in bigger signs. I know that those signs that we have now, if you're driving down the street, there's no way you're gonna read it while you're driving down the street. Maybe signs, maybe not as big as the four by eights that we put up for road construction, but something, you know, a little bigger than we generally have right now. Also, more than one sign on a large property? You know, you can locate it on one side of the road, but what about the other side of the road? Maybe have one or two, depending on how big the property, put another sign up there. Especially on the east end, you know, there's a lot of property out there and, yeah, more land out there. So, maybe with the bigger signs or multiple signs out there, I think that would help out also. Renters, you get a lot of renters, and I noticed in here it said property owner's notification. You get renters out there, and they want to know what's going on, where they rent at. And just recently, I spoke to some, an area we had on Cotton Wood and La Salle. And we had a development there that was approved, but when I did the walking through there, there was a couple of residents that were renters. And, you know, a lot of them said, well, if you're gonna build more homes here, there's gonna be more traffic, that's not what I want. I'll just, maybe we'll just move out somewhere else. So, you know, the chances of losing renters, and I know that their input is critical sometimes, but I know they're not a property owner, but they should be also notified.
If I could say, I did work for a jurisdiction some years ago that did notify renters. It's, we don't have actually built into any of our databases a list of apartments or even businesses. It's a little difficult to maintain. I think maybe by having additional notices out there, that might be a way of making sure people see it.
Yeah, bigger signs or multiple signs.
Or signs and larger signs might give you that same effect.
Because I think with the people that are renting, you know, it just changes.
Yeah, they're constantly turnover. Something like that would be, but I suggest we might look at also. But the six hundred feet, I think it's reasonable, and we can live with on that, that'd be good. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dr. Thornton?
I'm also supportive of the six hundred feet. Could you go back to the slide that shows the price of the hypothetical residential or the industrial one? So, signs currently cost three hundred and forty-six dollars. So, if we increase the sign, that's gonna cost more money, right?
Yes.
And then if we do more signs than that, that's gonna be even more. And how long do the signs stay out there for?
It will be, they're taken down within the week after the public hearing. And I should note that these, what I've showed is the cost, do not include like staff time.
We still have that gas station one still there.
I will make a note of that, thank you. Normally, they take it down within a week, so.
So, just based upon the cost of the signs in the short term, I'm not necessarily supportive of a bigger sign or increased signs. And what I'm hoping is that we do coordinate with like Public Works to figure out what is the most trafficked street and that the signs are placed on the streets that have the highest traffic. Does that currently happen?
Right now, it's placed on the project site. If there are two sites, if there are two streets on a corner lot, it's placed on each frontage. So, it's placed on the property frontage.
It's placed at two frontages?
Yes, if it's on, if they're on a corner lot, it should be placed on each one.
Oh, okay, alright. And then just to go further, so then we probably don't need more than, more than one sign then?
If you have a very large property with a very wide frontage, it might make sense. So, we'll take a look at, you know, how wide would your property be before another sign might be justified?
Okay. And then concerning the current font on, for bigger signs, right? So, I do see the public notice, I see that, I don't necessarily see what the words say. I don't know if we make it even bigger, if you're still gonna be able to read what the actual words say. You'll still see public hearing notice, but you won't be able to read it, even if we do a bigger sign. Technically, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know.
But there's no way, there's no way to, I mean, I think the onus would be on them, I mean, they see public hearing. You know, if I see it, I would check.
So, I don't know if I'm necessarily supportive of a bigger sign, just maybe if we can see a sample to see if it's gonna end up, but the additional cost and only being five or six days, I don't know if that's necessarily worth it. I am supportive of the postcard, though. Definitely, I think I got a notice maybe a couple of weeks ago and it had the postcard, because you're right, the white envelopes, I just throw those away. So, I'm definitely supportive of that, thank you.
The postcard? And then, and, okay.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, on that comment, we will be returning to you with an ordinance change on the six hundred feet. At that time, we can probably show you what we've come up with on signs. Not that the council approves signs per se, but we want to show you what we've come up with and make sure you're on the right track.
Definitely, so there's consensus, so we'll go with, you know, if you can do a code amendment for the six hundred feet, and then maybe some other possible solutions. And then, I think, I believe there's consensus to even to do the email blast, you know, to folks. And then, if they like it, you know, they can post it on their next door, you know, with the little link.
And maybe double-sided signs as well, if possible, might be another option.
Alright, so next item is A2, Review Current Commercial Vehicle Parking Areas. We'll have a brief report from Public Works, and then we'll do one round. Okay, go ahead. Public Works?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. This is gonna be a discussion about commercial vehicle parking. I'll wait for the presentation to come up. Basically, our intent tonight was a comment that had come up a couple of times in the past about discussing the current usage and the areas. So, our objectives tonight are to take a look at the current designated areas, the utilization, and then whether or not there's any possibilities for location adds and removals or changes. So, on the screen right there, there's the existing locations in red. Because it was such a wide area, the map's a little tiny, but down in the south there, also in the southwest corner of the city, really close to City Hall, those are our designated commercial vehicle parking areas right now by signage. So, what we did, similar to what was done a couple of years ago when we looked at the usage of the existing parking, we went out and did a couple of surveys at night, so Monday, Wednesday, Saturday in April of this year. We took a look at the areas that are designated for parking, allowable parking for commercial vehicles. And we also took what is, could be parked out there based on a typical semi-trailer. And you can see in the far right of the presentation, the And you can see in the far right of the presentation, the actual usage is very low compared to what could be out there. So, we're looking at, you know, ten, fourteen percent. There's a high of thirty-five, which is the Heacock Street one, which is on both sides. But on average, about fifteen percent of what could be parked is being utilized. So, we do have municipal codes and enforcement sections. So, we do have the municipal code, the Moreno Valley MC, which those are the sections up there on the slide. And there are applicable vehicle codes as well that would be enforced by both the parking control officers and PD. We do have a vehicle or a commercial vehicle enforcement unit. What we've done is we took a look at the certificate, or sorry, the citations from code and PD and put together what was a heat map, if you will, or, or hotspots. And you can see where it's, I'm going to call it orange, maybe it's red. Where it's darker red is where we have a more concentration of, of those citations. And you can see, you know, there's a couple of areas that have that. Again, because the map needed to be very large in its scale, it's kind of small in its, in its text. But you can see in blue where we have the existing parking. So, we have parking down south and then over there on the southwest, there's some existing commercial vehicle parking allowed. So, what we do think and want to look at designated parking areas for commercial vehicles, these are the things we look at. The top three are really about land uses. Making sure we're not putting the commercial vehicles adjacent to residents, where our driveway's at, also noise issues, making sure we're not putting idling trucks next to the wrong land use. The next three are all about cleanliness and safety, so we want to make sure. We have seen in the past that a lot of our commercial designated parking areas do collect a lot of trash and debris, so we want to make sure we can sweep that street. So, curb and gutter is very important from that. Also, curb and gutter is very important from that, from a perspective of the vehicle is able to drive off the edge of curb. Those trucks are very, very heavy and the edge of curb does not, or sorry, the edge of pavement does not support that, so we start seeing a very lot of damage to the edge of pavement. Street lights are obvious, that's a safety, safety one. The last two are more about just convenience and making sure we're putting them in the right spot, which is getting them into a roadway classification that has a lower, lower speed. These commercial vehicles are very large, so they start to reduce the visibility and the advantages of, of vehicles traveling. So, we want to make sure we're on a lower class in terms of speed limits. We also want to make sure they're in close proximity to the truck routes, designated truck routes by ordinance. We do see a couple of places for expansion in addition to what's already been designated. There's places in the south and also here in the southwest. So, Cosmo Street, north of Cremaria. If the council was so inclined to, to make a change, there's an opportunity for us to designate that. There's also Golden Crest on the west side of, of Ellsworth is an opportunity to make those two areas designated for commercial vehicle parking. So, I just put those in a little blue. You can see they're kind of close to some of the citation areas. I'll go back till you can see that come back in again. But those are the two areas I just talked about, Cosmos and then over there, again, southwest corner of the city, if we want to make an expansion. They're, again, close to some of the areas where have high concentration of citations. We do want to take a, a moment to talk about some of the new commercially available parking. These are going to be probably for sale, kind of. There's one on the March JPA over there, on the, sorry, the west side of Heacock and then also on Revard. Those are two projects that are entitled and are approved moving forward for commercial vehicle parking. Again, probably likely for pay. So, in conclusion, we believe that the existing commercial vehicle parking areas are functioning as intended. They are actually underutilized based on the counts that we did. There are new, two new private lots coming forward. And then there is an opportunity to expand those based on meeting the criteria. So, we're not looking for any specific recommendation or, or we don't have any recommendations for council, but we will be looking for input if there's any changes that council wants to make. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Michael. I know that what, what I've heard from several residents, and this has actually been for multiple years, it's not so much, well, you know, where to park too, but also I believe Riverside has a couple companies that do this where they, and Paris has one, and there's also one over by, actually two, where they actually, they park trucks and then they pay like a fee, you know, and it's, so I think they rent it, they rent the, the space and then there's a security guard. So, there's, the main concern, what I'm kind of hearing from the public and what I've heard multiple times is the security. So, you know, they can easily park it on the, on Heacock or, you know, they, they know that, but they don't want to because of the security purposes. So, then they have to park it in Riverside and then they have to drive, you know, back and forth. And so, I think that's kind of where the concern came from. But I'll let Councilmember Cabrera speak more on it as well, but at least that's what I heard. Okay, let me see. Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Yes, so that's been, the concerns for my constituents is that they park on Heacock and they get robbed overnight. So, I think that we do need something to, and I don't know what the answer to that would be. But my other question is, are there time limits for the trucks? Can they park there for three days, you know, on the available parking on the street currently?
I'll try to speak a little bit for, for PD. My, my understanding from the code sections, the seventy-two hours applies to that. So, there's a time limit, even if it's designated as commercial parking.
Is a seventy-two hour limit posted?
You know, I don't know if that's actually posted on our sign. I, I don't think the seventy-two hours is actually posted on any sign. It's part of the municipal code.
Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I, I got two concerns. I mean, it's not a, a fix overnight thing with parking, trucks parking. Motorhomes, are we going to include this in, in commercial parking on motorhomes on public roads?
Councilman, it's funny you should mention that. I just asked staff over the last week or so to, to look at some ordinance revisions on that because we've had some problems where RVs are being parked and they're being lived in. We've seen that over, for example, over in Golden Crest where we've been, our code and police officers are, are dealing with that. So, we'll likely come back to you to, to deal with some recommendations to deal with RV parking.
Yeah, because the complaints I got are, are not really tractor trailers. There are motorhomes where the residents are moving them on sweeper day and then they're parked right back again there for, for next couple of days. I had one resident saying that they had permission to park on the roadway. Someone from the city gave him permission. They, they were talking to somebody on the phone. She couldn't give me the name who she spoke to. And they told, as long as, as you can move it on sweeper day, there shouldn't be no concern, which of course, you know, I, I didn't believe that. But, but my main concern out in, in District Three are a lot of motor, motorhomes than, than tractor trailers. But then again, on weekends, get a lot of complaints that parking a tractor, not, not the trailer, just the tractor on people, on driveways. And you drive out there and hear, here's a tractor sitting on somebody's driveway. I know you can't have code out there all the time, but I believe if you call PD, that's the lowest priority and they're not going to come out and cite them. I mean, if, if a person keeps parking his truck out there every weekend, you know he's not getting cited. That or he's just probably cheaper to get tickets than parking it somewhere, you know, away from the house. But, yeah, the motorhomes would, would be the biggest problem in, on District Three. I don't know what it is with the rest of the city, but it's not a quick fix. I understand that with tractor trailers, so.
Okay. Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you. And just going back again to the safety component of this, I've mentioned before, I spent several years in Texas. There's huge trucking industry in Texas. There's a lot of vacant lands, vacant properties that are leased out. But, but the, the difference there is that it's, it's secure. You know, it's private properties. There's a fence around the property. There's eyes watching. That's a big difference compared to what we have with the streets, right? Yes, we maybe provide the parking. It's there. But another thing too is people are not finding out and don't know. I, I don't think we're doing a good enough job of getting the word out there, like reaching out to the trucking agencies and the companies that actually contract the truckers themselves. Because I've had people like, well, there's no, there's no parking and well, yeah, actually there is. And you mentioned that only about fifteen percent of the parking is actually used. Then there's, there's a disconnection there. There's a communication disconnection there. So, maybe we also need to do a better job of getting that information out there to, to everyone, to the, the trucking agencies, to the companies that we have here at the, at the executive level. And, and yeah, so it goes down to safety. I know you did mention that there were two private lots that were coming up soon. This is that, you know, private property owners who were issuing a business license to and a permit, or what is that?
One's in the JPA and, and the other is actually over near some property that, that we own for us a future fire station in the industrial area. And so, the thought, our, our belief is that those, those business owners have sensed this niche and would provide an enclosed and secured area for parking.
Yeah, that would be a huge difference. So, I'm really glad that that's coming and hopefully we can identify if there's any other lots in the city that kind of fit into these, these two lots that you identified already, that would be nice as well. And then let's make sure we get the word out there so that the truck drivers know, hey, I can park my truck here. I don't have to go park on Heacock. Is, most of us probably experience this too, that truck drivers are trying to get out of their truck and we're just, we're driving down the road. It's, it can be dangerous too. So, so yeah, if we can make sure we do the outreach so people know where the parking is and, and the new parking. And if we can incorporate these private lots, I think that'd be really good as well.
Okay. Councilmember Dr. Thornton?
So, concerning the current commercial trucking that's designated, it seems to me that it's meant more for the people that are passing through and not for actual residents. And I think based upon the same things that my colleagues have mentioned concerning the security and the long-term parking availability. So, for the one on JPA, you'll have to find a little bit more about that because that's not open yet. And then the one that's off of Paris, have they, have it started or is it a proposed idea? Okay. Just like Councilmember Cabrera mentioned that once those two sites do get open, that we're marketing, especially to our residents. And I'm thinking more for our residents. People live in our community who are truck drivers when they come home, that they have a place to park, that high value asset for them. So, I, I think that's more what we're focused on is our residents and not the transients that are, not transients, I sounded kind of bad. The people that are passing through concerning truck parking. So, yeah, if we can figure out that part, that will, I think that'll be more beneficial. And then the commercial parking opportunities.
I agree. And I think it's great that those two sites are going to be opening up and hopefully, do you know a timeline, Michael, on those?
I do not, no. I want to, I don't.
No, okay. Well, at least it's great that it's coming, you know, and, and then we can push that out there. So, maybe if you could send an email to, to us to let us know, because I think each of us have constituents that either own trucks and, you know, live in the city and, you know, I think they would like to know. Maybe they can park here and to the, it would, it would be a lot closer to home, definitely. So, okay, thank you. All right. Any city council requests or communications? All right, okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn at seven twenty-five PM.